The request was to annex it in from the county into the city. And then also a sequential request to change the zoning, which we always have to do on an annexation anyway, from county to city, to multi-residential, which it does, but a multi-residential lot already, tract already. It went to planning and zoning back on first, and it was approved unanimously through planning and zoning. And I'm here to answer any questions related to it. Three to one, actually. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so we're at number three? Number four?
Three. Number three.
Okay, let's hear it, Marjorie.
Yes, sir. The West Side Development Project that was presented at the last shot of council meeting, Ms. Mandy Young's here, she has a requirement she has to go through to proceed with this project. And Mandy, if you want to come address counsel, you may.
I will be brief. I think that last time I went through basically everything that you all needed to know. Passed out a site plan that you have there. This is one of our, we really feel good about this project, and we hope that you all do too, and look forward to working with you all. And if you have any questions, I think that's probably a better use of time for me, just to see if you have any questions for me. And that's really it. As like Larry said, I had to fill this formality to, you know, have the public notice that, you know, we were presenting the project, so. Any questions?
I don't have a question of you, but I've got a question of you. No, okay, I'm looking at this map.
Yes.
Is the dark line where the city limit is now, I should know that, I'm embarrassed to say that I don't, is that what we're proposing? I just want to see, is that where the city limit line runs now?
Yes.
Okay.
Right along here. They're closing that up, that end to the city.
Gotcha, okay, I just want to make sure I have that. Okay, that's okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mandy.
Hope you, and we'll go to number four, urban redevelopment area.
Yes, sir. Burke, who's going to get us started on this?
Actually, I think Rob was going to start you, we started you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
And I'm probably here for questions.
Sure. This is a copy of a map that we, and basically, we had received a request to look at our urban renewal area, so we have the area for that, and then eventually our plan. So we did, and the first thing that we came into to look at, and that's what this is over here on this side, I'm sorry, I'm kind of, this is the census area for the city of Tith, or for Tith County, actually, the two census areas, actually, of which a portion of it is into the city, to the south, and I know it's hard to see, but you should have that in your packet. And what it is, is that now, one thing that we're looking at is that if that census area is rated as low to moderate income, which both of those privileged areas are low to moderate income, then we have the ability to put them into our development area. So what we did is we had a map drawn, and what, basically with a map too, just so you'll know, and this may be hard to see, if I need to bring this up closer, I can, go and bring it closer. And there are actually two of them on the walls, posted, for anyone else that may want to look at it. The bottom line is, is that really if you drew a line, the urban, the area that has been determined in the census actually starts, if you notice, it comes kind of down Eighth Street, goes back up, I mean, down Second Street, and then goes back up and back out, all the way to the west part of town into the county. And then it goes south, way south is where we're at, I mean, it goes way south. So to include those areas, which would be considered low to moderate income areas in the western part of our city, we were going to add everything that's in that area that is in the western part. It looks kind of jagged, but our city limits look jagged. So basically, this dark red line follows the city limits, et cetera, et cetera, all the way around. That's for the western, and that's done by the census, by the fact that the census says that is an area that can fall into that category.
That's qualified census tract.
Qualified census tract, all right. Also, at the same time, there were a few areas on this side that were only in the census tract. And also, we wanted to add by staff, really, three different areas that weren't in it now, that weren't in the census tract, but we have determined that by definition do fall into the category because they're in decline, or that they are in, where property values may not be holding quite as steady. There's a lot of factors, it's a long list of factors that we've looked at. And these are areas that we had already discussed when we started the department, for those of you that were here when we started, is that we have certain areas that we wanted to concentrate on, any form of redevelopment to get in, to slow down the progression of areas that are in the decline, to try to turn that around, okay? And one of the areas is, one of the ways to do that is to redevelop those areas. And what this would do, and we did check with several authorities, what this will do is that it will allow that when monies are available, i.e. to rebuild, like we have with CHIPS such as that, although our portion is used for down payments, they can also be used for remodeling and bringing things back up to standard. That money, by being in this zone, it would give people an opportunity to have more points toward getting the money, a better chance of getting the money. And that's one reason that we want to include these extra areas, and just to show you how it is, this black area that's lined in black, that was the original zone that was set up in 2000. And then later on, and I'm not sure what year, 2009, they added a tract that's actually referred to in the guidelines, is the Ferry Lake Road tract, which is actually, this in blue, that runs back out like this, okay? So far, we're still in your district, pretty much, in Mr. Terrell's district. They left out a quadrant that ran basically right here, which is kind of an area that's west of the park, but yet, south of 12th, north of either Sixth or Eighth, in that area. It wasn't in there, we as staff feel like that's an area that we need to address, that we want to be able to develop and redevelop to stop that progression. They also, the tract that is actually north of, it runs up in the 14th, 16th, 18th street area between, really, it runs all the way over when we got to looking at it. And I did drive these and mark these and make sure where we're looking at, but we're going to take a line that comes from the edge of the park, up Old Osilla, to Tyson, okay? Tyson all the way up to 20th, 20th back over to just the other side of, well, it's actually to Wilson, which would be just the other side of the church building there. Come down one block to 16th, go over one block to Ridge, and then follow Ridge all the way back down, which actually is the line on this side anyway. And those are areas that we've determined that are in transition. There's no question about them being in transition. We've had increase in crime, we've had increase in, you know, all kinds of things that show that, there's a lot of houses that are vacant, has a high percentage of rentals in it. It's also an area that y'all already remember, that we've been trying to push for development. I believe the Garvys have put a development, you know, plant and development overlay in there, we want to try to work on some of those in the future. And we want that area to, we want to be able to use any of the tools that we can to develop, to redevelop those areas. And one of the tools is by putting it in this area, I mean, putting it in that group. So this is how we presented it. There was also one more area that I didn't mention, and it was actually further east, which is over around Windsor and Newton, that area right across there that's still in the city. Now, part of that's in the county, part of it's in the city, but those are areas that are in transitions downward, and we would like to stop that, and then eventually turn them around, and this is a tool that we can have in our toolbox to use to do that. So that was our justification for doing what we're doing here.
Does that have any impact on, I understand how it works for developers and people that might want to come in and buy tracts and things like that, but does it have any impact for someone who's just lived in their house for a long time?
Yes.
And they need some assistance, and how does that work?
Well, we checked with, we actually checked with Mr. Henderson, who actually does those types of programs, and the first thing out of his mouth is, yes, it gives them a better chance. So if they turn in an application and they're eligible, they're going to have a higher probability of getting funding.
To redevelop their own property.
To redevelop their own property, personal properties.
Right.
If that money's available.
Right.
Now, keep in mind, that's the catcher.
I understand.
And they're already doing that in the county, because they're using their chip money in the county to redevelop single-family dwellings that belong in individuals, if they qualify, okay? So yes, there is a strong, it would definitely give them a better advantage over someone who was not in that area, and that is, that's an individual, a homeowner.
That's awesome. Another question, would it be up to, is the city obligated to use our chip funding for down payment assistance, or could we split that and use some of that for other?
We did talk to him about that, and I believe that we do have an option to do that, but for the next round, it's already set.
I understand that.
For down payments. And that has been the way we've used it, because it has really been beneficial in getting people, first-time home buyers into homes, and getting some areas that are vacant, redeveloped. We've used it for that, it's just been a different use.
Right.
It's been for more new construction type use, although it can be, and is, in the county being used for that. So I guess that, and he did mention that if we wanted a chip, that it would have to be as it comes, it comes in in chunks.
In chunks, yeah.
And if it did, the next chunk, we would have to designate what we, I don't know about the split part, but designate how we're going to use it, and that has to be, you know, changed.
Because there's so many people that do need help, they don't want to move, they, you know, they've invested and they want to stay, but they just need, they need some help, and, you know, that...
When we write the grant for the next round of chip, which we just got this one, so it'll take about 24 months.
Sure.
We'll start the process probably in 12 months of applying for the next round of chip. But also, you can get CDBG money to do renovations for people. So, and I'm sure there's some USDA money out there for that. And these aren't necessarily grants, they might be little interest loans.
Right.
Or something like that.
It's just assistance to have, yeah.
But as Burke said, you know, instead of having no tools about it, we're going to do it.
At least we got it.
But how it is.
How does, I'm sorry, no, we have...
Well, we had actually, when we were looking, the group that met, the, Mr. Hutzle was in, and myself, and there were service that met about the housing, and we were looking at specific areas. And that was one of the areas that we looked at intensely, I can't think of the name of it, Gitch?
Yeah.
Oh, Gitch, yeah, yeah. And that was one of the things that came up, is that from time to time, there are monies that are made available. If there is a way to increase the chance of that money coming here, especially to individual homeowners, then we want to make sure that that's locked in.
My question was, how does that impact, or does it impact, our ability for grants and things like that for infrastructure development and road improvements and all? Does that give us as a community any benefit?
If you're in those zones, you get extra points. You're talking about CDBG grants for like Old Osilla, things like that.
Any kind of infrastructure development, yeah.
Those points.
Okay, because not only do the homeowners need assistance, some of our infrastructure and our roads aren't, you know, best, so.
And we have one of those right now, it's going to the west side, so we're putting a CDBG grant, over a million dollars.
What was the determination of, was the age of the houses, was that determined upon expanding the area?
Expand the area. It had more to do with where we've seen decline. We looked at law enforcement reports, we looked at, now, keep in mind, this was census, but in this area, we looked at law enforcement reports, we looked at our code enforcement violations, which I'll see that at least once a year. We looked at areas of where houses are sitting vacant, or in a state of dilapidation of some sort, decline. We looked at many, many, many factors. We looked at trends of how populations are moving, if you know what I'm saying, through. And, you know, that was some of the area, and that's the determination that was made. When we first started, one thing I did is initially, was I did a lot of time riding up and down roads, and determined these were, and this was before we even considered changing these, but then our plan to do this anyway, it's just, it came up. And the areas that I've marked are areas that I've marked the first three months we were doing this, and we just haven't changed them yet. Well, if we're going to change, now's the time to change it all, that's the bottom line. And then we'll come back with specifics of our plan itself, this is the area, and work on that, and you'll be seeing that in the future, so we can say these are things we want to try to put in place to actual, you know, happenings, things that we could do.
Well, we have a lot of public hearings and things to involve there.
Definitely.
Let me just address that real quick, just following up with what Burke said, you know, right, what the council's doing now is re-designating the urban redevelopment area. Because right now, what you have, you have that black area, has already been designated, as well as Ferry Lake Road. You already have a plan for the initial 2000.
Right.
This is your urban redevelopment plan for 2000. So what will happen is you go forward, and you will actually adopt another urban redevelopment plan for a particular area, and then that will go through the public hearing process, and then, of course, then you can approve or not, you decide. This is the initial step, where council first has to designate, this is a urban redevelopment area that is necessitated for other health, safety, and welfare. And once that's done, then you can go, then you go down, and you'll start looking at your actual urban redevelopment plan, and then you'll develop that plan, and that will be, again, presented for a public hearing, and then adopted for particular urban development projects within the plan.
This is an opportunity to update that, too.
Yeah.
From 2000 and now, lots changed, so.
So is it a ten-year plan, or is it...
Well, actually, you know, they say the plan is how it is from time to time. And so, as you, you know, as you're working through things, your plan can change. If there's a substantial change in your plan, then you go back and have another public hearing. If there's a minor change, then you don't have to do that.
A prime example of that is, this is where the municipal court and Main Street is. This was part of the initial urban redevelopment plan, is that part of the plan that's written in that document there was to redevelop this block, and it was to put, tear down the existing buildings that were here that were falling down, and to salvage the ones that were to salvage. But that was actually written, or is actually written in the plan. So when we redo the plan, that will already be done, been done, it'll be, that's been out of the plan, it's already happened.
I guess the reason why I'm asking these questions, you go, let me see, you come up, you know, cutting over on 20th Street, but you go up around the Meadow, Bruce Acres subdivision, you got a lot of older homes in that area, that our homeowners that have been there 20-plus years, my parents, who lived in that area. You know, what I'm saying is, if we, this is a plan that's got been placed for 10 years...
No. Anytime, anytime you decide that there's another area that you want to bring into the area, then again, you know, if it fits within the definition of a slump, which is what they...
Ah, I got you.
Then you bring that in as well.
Okay.
It's got, if I remember, it's got to have a certain amount of disinvestment, like you said, crime rate.
I got you.
When we did that plan there, we had University of Georgia come in and work with us to create those, I think Bruce, Green...
The charrettes.
The charrettes, yeah. And show examples of, if you took this block, this is what you could do. It was really, it was really impressive to see, is that an option we could, as we expand and look at this? Because that first urban redevelopment area, so much of that was commercial, you know, it was easy to kind of understand with commercial, but when you're talking about what you can do with existing homeowners, and how their other street could be impacted in a positive way, I think it would be helpful if we had that.
You said, we are, excuse me, that the chip money for this is already, we already have that, right?
When we applied for the chip grant this year, we applied for down payment assistance.
Okay.
So we can't use that money for renovations, it has to be down payment assistance.
Okay, okay. So, the city, what you're talking about bringing in, bringing in there? It's, all the chip money is going to be for, you said...
It's down payment assistance.
Down payments assistance.
Citywide.
Okay, okay, I got you.
It would be in an application for the next one that we applied for, and that's one we would designate, if we want to change it.
Yeah, I got you now, we straight, all right.
Let me say a few words, I'm sorry I'm late. Fairfield just had to have me there to cut the ribbon, say a few words, and it was all supposed to be done, Joe, you know how this goes, we'll have you out of here by five. And, but I'm sorry I'm late, but I'm here now, I thank y'all.
We were in good hands while you were gone.
I know you were.
Now, you could take over, we're at number six, I believe, no, number five, number five.
Are we going to skip that one, because I know that Wes and...
Rob was going to discuss, and we're going to stick to our presentation.
Okay, you're in, this is present.
So we're going to go forward with that?
Marjorie, I think you're going to discuss the issue.
What issue? Not eligible employees. If you, as y'all remember, we, back when we had the retreat in January, we discussed how some retirees of the city were receiving 3% COLA, who were ineligible, because they did not retire under normal retirement. That's been going on for a number of years. As you recall, that according to the research that we've done, that really violates the gratuity clause of the constitution, and we cannot compensate people more than what they're entitled to. So basically, these payments over this period of time have basically been in violation of our plan, and probably in violation of the gratuities clause. Naturally, a lot of these employees are now getting a certain amount, which we really may be relying on, you know, today. What I'm contemplating, and what I would suggest to council, is that we cannot continue to give them a 3% COLA increase, because we would be violating the constitutional prohibition of gratuities clause. However, some, or maybe all of these former employees, received a letter from the city indicating that they were going to be entitled to a 3% COLA, even though they were not. The law is, is that that's what they call ultra-virus, you know, an employee cannot bind the city, promise things that are beyond their authority. And certainly, that was beyond anybody's authority to tell these people they're going to get 3% COLA, when they were not entitled to it under the plan and under the law. However, what I would suggest is that in order to settle any claims that any of these employees may want to, may have, if there is a viable claim, that we inform the employees that we will continue to pay them the current rate that they're receiving for the retirement, that they will no longer get the 3% COLA that they were not entitled to start with, but we will also require them to execute an asylum release of the city, you know, for, you know, any, you know, claims that they may have against the city. So that's a means by which we could continue paying them what they're getting, through a settlement, which then would not violate the gratuities clause. We could continue what we're paying them through a settlement, not violate the gratuities clause, and that's the way I think we could resolve those ineligible employees. And I think that, you know, I would imagine, based upon what I know of the law in this area, that I would feel confident that all the employees would be willing to accept that resolution to the case. That's, you know, that's how I intend on moving forward. I would draft a letter, you know, to these employees, certainly, you know, explain to them what the situation is, have them come in with me and Carla, and go over the issues, and how we're going to seek to resolve it. And that's about it for those, that group. I think we've pretty much resolved the other issues on the other groups, as far as how we're going to handle those in-house.
Ready to move on? Item number six, ordinance providing for craft ear growlers?
This is a topic near and dear to my heart.
I'm sure.
I was asked to take a look at, drafting up a ordinance for growlers. My D.K.'s there, requesting us to look into this, and I saw several ordinances from several cities, and I've given everybody a copy of what I prepared, which is pretty much consistent with what everyone has done relating to the growlers. Did have a chance to talk with Troy, I dropped by the ordinance to him a couple of days ago, and he did indicate to me that I was not aware of, is that there are aluminum growlers as well, as glass growlers. So I would suggest that in that event, because I think what Troy's intending to do is that people can take, not, you know, just growlers that they may have got from some other location, and have them filled at his location. So I would probably change that to provide for glass and aluminum growlers. There's also, as you can see in there, that they, they'll be required to be sterilized, and I talked to Troy again just before the meeting, that's going to be dictated by the Department of Health, and they require so many bins, and how that procedure will go, and how it will be controlled by the Department of Health. So, other than that one tweak on the definition of growlers, including aluminum growlers, does anyone have any questions about that? I think we'd be, you know, we're good to go.
So this is good, isn't it? All right. The resolution of the bill of JAG grant application, Larry?
I got seven.
Oh, well, I did skip over one, an order providing for a memo with regards to noise control, Rob?
Okay, again, we were, I was asked to take a look and see what we could do about devising our noise control ordinance. As it was addressed, the council, someone was contemplating opening up an establishment downtown that may play music, and it may, you know, the way the ordinance was drafted now is that you'll not be able to have that business. What I did, I took a look at numerous municipalities about how they handle their noise control. And some jurisdictions handle it by how many feet you are away from the establishment, and can you hear it or not, whereas other municipalities have handled it by having a noise level meter, which actually measured the level of the noise. I was kind of opting more towards the noise level meter, since it's more objective, and I think it's easier to administer and enforce. I did talk with Buddy Dowdy and the chief, I asked him to call around, see how other, how the other cities were handling it, and whether they were happy with that, the way they were able to handle the noise meter, and he said that they were doing okay with those. So basically, the idea with this type of ordinance is that you will measure the level of the noise by this meter, and the level of the noise that's going to be allowed is going to be dependent on what type of property is actually receiving the noise. So if I'm a residential residence, then the noise level that I can hear that noise is going to be lower than if I'm on a commercial property. So it can't be as loud if you're, you know, if it's going to be going out of a residential property. Also, the time of day will dictate how loud it can be, you know, it can be louder, I think we have until 11 o'clock. It can be louder up to 11 o'clock, then after 11 o'clock, that, you know, the decibels will decrease, I think maybe by five or 10, depending on the type of property. So that's really the overall scheme of it. That way, you're not too much concerned about whether, if I'm trying to hear noise from another property, Jamie, you might be the same way, we may not hear a thing, whereas, you know, Wes or, you know, Julie May.
That's right.
This is a, to me, a good way to regulate it objectively, and I think it'll take into consideration if you're having a business that's in a commercial district versus having a business that's close to a residential district.
Demonstration time.
I like it.
This is the chief running a truck?
No, you could just fake it or something else.
I could.
This is a DB meter, and if you, no one in this room says a word. We're about 41, 42 dB. So that's just the room noise, it's your air conditioning running, people breathing, and all that kind of stuff. With me talking this close to it, we're running about 64, 65 dB, and for every 10 dB, the volume of sound doubles. So if I'm at 65 right now, or for me to get it up to 75, I really got to pump it up there a little bit. So that's about how loud it would be. And then for every, you want to go ahead, we're trying to see if the race is on. But for every time you go from inside the business to the outside, or outside the inside, there's about a 10 dB drop from the outside to the inside.
Kind of back down, but still, and it's crazy, but I said, I definitely thought we were capable of winning races, and I'd be also hoping we can get some more.
You mentioned you live in North Carolina, so this is a home game this weekend, and you look like you're getting plenty of sleep with that new little girl at home. Everything okay on the home front?
Yes, yes, I do get plenty of sleep. I mean, like I said, came, brought her home from the doctor, to the hospital, and the second night, she slept, I think it was eight hours, we woke up and looked over, and like, oh my God, what's wrong? And she's been sleeping ever since.
See, we were on such a good roll, now you made me mad, because neither...
That's 80 dB, by the way, that TV was at 80 dB decibels.
I was just going to wonder, if you can put it down to 60 or 55, and see how loud it is.
Well, you're pumping 55, Rob.
Yeah, but he's a logger, test something like that.
All right, I'm going to turn it down a little bit.
But different cities have different levels, you know, what I, what...
You know, what I, what you have is Richmond Hills, you know, levels. I think Brunswick-
And Matty's done with Matt Clark. You know, the truth is always good. Turns out the stories will look pretty dang good, too. Everhand shares one of the best when this edition of the Hump continues. And the event is five segments. It's full of drivers that know all about winning. So how do you set the odds for the All-Star race? Tom Herman joins us from Vegas to handicap the show next.
So if you, in other words, so if you're sitting on your property line and it's louder than that during the daytime, then that's a noise disturbance, that's a violation. Now, if you're, you know, at night, if it's fifty, you know, it's louder than fifty-five and you're on your property line, then that's a noise disturbance. And I'd say you can, Brunswick was seventy-five down, you know, in commercial areas. I think Ringgold was seventy in commercial areas. So, I mean, you can-
What was Valdosta?
Actually, Valdosta's just like ours. They, our current, you know, our current ordinance, they, you know, they're the same as ours as far as, what was it, fifty, 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 fifty feet? Because I know, that's one of the first ones I looked at, because I was curious, because I thought he was interested in going with Valdosta, and Valdosta's ordinance is just like ours.
I know Valdosta's got some places downtown where they stay openly. There's a priest that lives on the second floor of one of those buildings, a penthouse down there, and somehow or another, they've made it all work together in Valdosta.
Well, it's complaint-driven, as Buddy will tell you, and there you are, moving around on it. But if you, you know, I mean, one thing I will draw your attention to is that under the definition of residence, this, and this is something that you might need to, says residential property category, is all property on which people live and sleep, or which is not commercial or industrial. Now, if you, that would mean to me that if you have got upstairs apartments, you know, in downtown commercial, then that would classify as residential property, and that then the noise level limit would be applicable to that residence versus, I didn't want to mislead you to think that just if you're downtown, you're, I think in some instances, the residential noise level will still be applicable if you maintain that definition of residential property category. Whereas what you could do is say, you know, residential districts or zones, and if you're living downtown, well, you're just gonna be subject to the commercial levels. So that's, I want to make sure that you understood that would be possible.
Sixty-five.
Us talking right here, that's what it is.
Sixty-five during the day and sixty at night?
Now, that's inside the residence. Not outside, that's inside the residence.
Well, that's, that's one of the things we had talked about, is that when you let, you know, as you, as the ordinance is drafted, is that the noise level would be read if I'm standing on my property line, if it's, if I have real property. If I'm in a multi-dwelling unit, then the noise level is to the nearest dwelling. Now, one of the things we had talked about is, well, where do you measure that noise level from? Inside the other apartment or outside the other apartment? And there was a, one that I had seen where they talked about the measurement would be taken inside with the doors and windows closed. But then I thought, well, suppose you have an outside patio, and maybe you shouldn't make it inside with doors and windows closed. So that's just, you know, I'm throwing those things out there for your thought as far as how to deal with, first of all, you, how to measure the multifamily dwelling? Should it be inside the dwelling? Because I think now it's, it's a little bit vague as far as the measurement, it says to the nearest, to the nearest dwelling, it doesn't say inside or out. And then, how do you might want to handle the people if they live in a commercial downtown district, living upstairs? Should they be determined, you want to measure them by the residential level or the commercial level since they're in a commercial district? So there's some issues for y'all to, she will-
Right now, they have an hearing, semi-ice coming through there at two o'clock in the morning. I've been down there, and that's, that's pretty loud, pretty not a consistent loudness, but it's loud when those semi-ices come through the middle of Tipton. But I just hope we can work it all out so we can build our downtown. I think it's just something good.
Well, as I said, I think those are the two main issues that I saw, you know, and I started thinking about going in and re-revising it last night about maybe how to measure those. I mean, we can leave it basically as it is, you know, where you can measure it from, you know, multifamily dwelling, from the nearest dwelling, and I would, unless, it probably would be better if we put something in there about where it would be measured from, the doorway.
If you start looking at multifamily units, like apartment complexes and things, there's no one sitting in an apartment that wants to hear their neighbor's stereo inside their apartment. So I'm just kind of thinking through this thing, there, if you have multiple units, personally, I think the noise level should be taken inside the apartment, because otherwise it's not disturbing, unless you're out in the yard or something. But then again, even at sixty-five or seventy DB, if you're in a yard, and if we're talking right now at sixty-five or seventy DB, that shouldn't really disturb you from one yard to the next. And then in the commercial downtown units, or where you have situations where you have apartments on two places that are two stories, it's the same thing, it's the nearest residence that it should be taken inside the apartment. That's my opinion.
If I filed a complaint, I gotta have a police officer come into my old house and-
And he's gonna have to take the noise level inside the apartment.
I do think we need to look, too, not only at what's causing noise that could be offensive, but noise that happens that we all enjoy, like, I'm thinking about the bells at First Baptist Church. And I noticed that there is an exception, like for a church on Sunday or something, but that, I wouldn't want that to be in violation of the noise ordinance. That's very pleasant, pleasing, and people enjoy that. So there, I think there are things we need to look at that can be-
I think this is-
Well, it just says-
Seven AM to ten PM.
It says it's in conjunction with worship, and that's not, I don't know. But anyway, just, I just want to make sure those things don't all of a sudden become in violation because we've created a noise ordinance. And then I noticed that, I want to make sure I understood this right, the exempt events also says events with amplified sound that are operating within the time and volume parameters set forth in an approved special administrative permit. I don't want us to, you know, things like hometown holidays or rhythm and ribs, you know, the album concerts at the park and things like that. I want to make sure we don't push those to the side.
I think those are noise generated from initially sponsored or group celebrations.
Yeah, that would all be exempt, so we don't have any issues with those.
I see what you mean by that.
Pretty well got it.
Okay.
But I think that if y'all are good with it, I could, you know, where it talks about multifamily dwelling, I could just say, yeah, you measure from the closest neighbors, you know, inside, you know, inside the dwelling, something along those lines. So that's where that measurement will be taken, so that's a little bit clearer. And then, you want to just leave the idea of a residence, including a residence that may be in a commercial district, and let that have the level, the sound level be applicable to a residential, even though they're in a commercial district?
I think if they choose to live downtown, they need to expect a semi coming.
Yeah, I think that, I think that might be a little super strict to, because you, when you go, when you go live downtown, you know you're gonna have sort of trade-off. Yeah, that's city life, there you go.
Julie, Rob, it's a super, super thing, I mean, because we are careful and restricted too much, and they may have a bad idea about when we have hometown holidays, even though it's exempt, they may make some big deal.
So what I'll do then, I will change this to ensure that, I'll make the residential properties mean residential districts, and commercial districts mean commercial districts. Again, I think as we, this is, this might be a little work in progress as this thing works through. It's gonna be complaint-driven, and, you know, maybe Buddy can see how we're doing over the next six months or so, and see, will this need to be tweaked anyway, do we have to reduce the decimal levels or lower and whatever, we can always do that.
We also just need to get the property owners downtown that do have apartments, and they rent, to whomever they're renting to, make sure that they indicate in the lease that this is a commercial downtown area, subject to noise and what have you, just so that they can't get into the apartment and say, hey, let it know. That's what I'm talking about.
For them to inform them.
That's right. I don't think you need to bring a man kissing here with all their equipment.
All the ribs on the ribs.
That's a special event, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, we've got to use a little consideration. You need to reconsider that, or my ban, we could bring my ban down here and really blow everybody else.
We do have another meeting to go to after this one. We have another meeting.
Yes, okay, let's go to item number, thank you for all the good work. Let's go to item number, number eight, the resolution submitting of JAG grant application, Larry?
That's a housekeeping thing, they presented the JAG grant last meeting, we have to do a resolution for the grant, and this, they have this resolution to submit, and that will be on the call meeting afterwards. That's-
That's good.
That's on the videos, okay?
All right, proposal for Chula Fire Station, Chief, sorry.
Good evening, I'm in brief. This is an update for you on one of our SLOSP four projects for the fire department. We put out an RFP for design build specs for our Chula Fire Station back in April. We had seven contractors and/or architectural firms show up to the pre-proposal site meeting so we could discuss the design specs with them, what we were looking for, and out of those seven, we had one proposal submitted by the deadline. That was by Tucker Brothers, the local contractor. And I'm here tonight to ask your permission to enter into negotiation, or what the city manager has designated to enter into negotiation to have Tucker Brothers secure a contract. They are over the allotted SLOSP funding for this project, but not by enough, I feel confident that we can, we can trim some fat and get it in budget and proceed. This is a long-winded project, this is an older SLOSP four project, we're nearing the end of our SLOSP four project, in fact, as far as I know, this will be the last one for the fire department in the SLOSP four. We have two tankers that are on line to be delivered in June, it's $240,000 each. We got approximately $260,000 for this project. I think we can trim, trim down what Tucker Brothers have proposed and still have us a nice station. But I'm asking your permission that Larry and I, or Larry, enter into negotiations with Tucker Brothers to work a contract to build the Chula Fire Station.
Hey, Chief, brother, good point, you said, and whoever else. Now, I, nobody has to, but I'd like Wes to sit in on that. Wes, would you have any objection to that? He's that financial guru, and, you know, when you start talking about numbers and stuff like that, I'd really appreciate him going along with it.
Mr. Mayor, he's going to vote on that issue.
That's a good point.
I don't think that would make my big part here.
I am.
Really? You got the own retirement thing, too, but I'd pretty much want a committee.
It's all different, it's not a big one.
Okay, well, do you agree with that, Mr. Turner?
Yes, I do.
Why?
What was, what was the budget you were mounting for the Chula Fire Station?
Two hundred and sixty pounds.
Two hundred and sixty pounds, sorry. And what was his bid?
Two seventy-five was his bid. Now, he submitted some options to that, they always do when they submit these things, all of which look good and may could be worked in after that base bid is reduced. But basically, it has to be reduced, in my estimation, before we can make any progress on trimming the fat and getting it in budget. I've had, had experience with Tucker Brothers and others along these lines, and I don't think there'll be a problem, I feel confident we can do it, and still get a station we need, a facility that we, the guys will enjoy and will be proud of. I don't think we need to really sacrifice anything, so maybe a little square footage and some draperies and maybe a different flooring, you know, we're expecting to just trim.
Thanks, Chief, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And that's it, they don't have a call meeting?
We have, on the, we still have openings on the Peuketree Board, we have an opening on Peuketree, beautiful Lori Marchant has submitted an application for that. On historic preservation, we have four appointments that are coming up, or reappointments, and we have three applications, one from Charles Steyer, one from Suzanne Click, and one from Nathaniel Bridgen, they are in your package of applications. We also have an opening for a term expiration of Erica Johnson on the public library board. Vicki Horace is requesting that she be reappointed, and she's willing to continue to serve. Planning and zoning, we have Major Battle Jr. and Julie Sharp, whose terms expire on June 30th.
You don't stay there?
We'll have to address, I have not spoken to either, I'll be happy to do that if you wish.
What about, have Jeff or Mr. Pilcher or Jeff Robbins in here?
I haven't contacted anyone.
Can we contact all of those folks to see if they would be interested in, if that's okay with everyone?
Yeah.
All right. I will do that and report back to you all. And that's my report.
Okay, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have the call meeting now, because I can call them up, we'll have to have a vote for that. And we're all gonna leave here, go to Omega from here, is everybody going? They're gonna feed us down, they don't know that.
Because that won't be our last stop if they're not.
I saw, I saw Donnie coming up, Donnie Hester from the county, he was coming up as I was rushing, leaving to get here. Of course, they had food and stuff over in Fairfield Inn, and I didn't have time to stay for it. I told Donnie, I said, don't eat too much food, I thought he was gonna feed us down to Omega, and he said, you were right, I'm waiting for that, I'm looking forward to it. I think that's a good idea. A little way to have a call meeting. The first item is the resolution providing for the JAG grant, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, oh, sorry, Wes, that we approve the JAG grant and allow Larry to do what he needs to do with that, or whoever.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please hit five, or raising your right hand, seeing aye? That's your answer, Mr. Mayor. The, was that in the call meeting?
We have executive session talking about real estate matters, and Latasha, we may or may not have something to announce after, after the call meeting.
But Latasha, Latasha is a little stronger than we might have, so I hang around. We'll, just as soon as the meeting's over, I'll step out, go back in, we don't want to do that. And I guess we'll take it just a couple of minutes, thank you all for coming, I appreciate your good help.